Order selectmen meeting to order, can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Harris, Selectman Harris is going to be a few minutes late, so we're just going to go ahead and start without him. Do we have any walk-ins this evening? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the report of the town administrator. Tricia, please.
Mr. Chair, in your tablet packet is a list of items pending for the week in May second. The list gets longer, but we've taken a couple of big things off like the public safety building and soon the library. Just a couple of quick reports. Thank you, ma'am. Shipshape Day, I know you're probably going to talk about it at the end of the meeting, but I have some statistics for you and want to thank Donna Baggett and the Beautification Committee for all their work. It was great weather and turnout. We had 496 volunteer families, eight dogs, and three selectmen. Thank you for doing that. And also Young Cub Scout troop, all the beach associations, and some sports teams. And I think Donna explained two weeks ago, the 15th anniversary, this was the 15th anniversary celebrated with 120 students submitting themed posters. And we saw the glow-in-the-dark commemorative recipients as well. Six local businesses provided food prices and gift certificates, I want to name them, Wilbers North, Tennessee News, Richardson-Hattie Funeral Home, Dunkin' Donuts, Sursis Grotto, and not to be last or least known as Ice Cream Tart. 580 bags of trash, 400 bags of recycling material. And the Highway Department will spend, as you know, all week picking that stuff up. So we really, it's a wonderful thing that community does, and a shout out to all those people that made it there.
That's great.
That's great. Is that more than the vast, Tricia?
I don't know, I think it's probably around. We do do a tremendous amount, sometimes it takes an EPW almost a week to pick up the stuff. So folks be patient, we'll get to those. I'm happy to inform the board that the Attorney General's Office has already approved the bylaws voted last week, so our recreational marijuana moratorium has been accepted by the AG. So we can go forward with that, the planning board can start.
That's great.
That's great, that's fast.
Yeah, very quick turnaround, very quick turnaround. I did want to talk a little to folks about the golf course, and I think we're going to be talking about this as the season gets underway. And I received an email today from Steve Gano, who's the Vice President of International Golf Maintenance, they're headquartered in Florida. And I want to read what he sent to me. The long-lasting effects of the 2016 drought in water shortage are going to continue to affect the quality of the course. And that they want to make sure that continuing with the town and Bob Sanderson and our patrons to make sure they understand that we're doing everything we can to bring the course back, but that it's going to take a full season, possibly more, to recover all of the areas affected. And we want patients to know that, they have a good plan and work hard to reestablish turf coverage, but the soil and lack of thorough irrigation coverage makes it a very lengthy process. So just to remind it to folks, this is not something that the town imposed in terms of watering, that's a mandate from DEP that limited the golf courses availability. It doesn't matter whether it's a well, a detention pond, municipal water, it's regulated by DEP. So we know the course has looked a lot better, but this is going to be a transitional season. We encourage people to still go there, and the food is great at the North River Grind, so go visit that and hit a bucket of balls, whatever. But I just want to make sure that we know what the course is like in that long transition period. I want to give a shout out for the third annual Pizza Palooza, my second favorite thing that happens at the school department after the science spectacular. It's May 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the South Hadley High School gym.
Wait, wait, wait.
Going to South Hadley?
That's a long ride.
I started as a guest.
Rewind.
I've only worked in Ass Town, so we slip through sometimes. First of all, I have to say to it.
It's a long trip.
We're giving a punch for South Hadley here.
I do, I like to come up because I hope it guarantees that I'm a judge every year. But this is a new and expanded Pizza Palooza, there's lots of different food, and again, just a great, great affordable thing for families to come for the night, and the kids do just a terrific job.
And the best part of it, you get to test the various slices of pizza and see if you like it from the various restaurants and pizza shops, and it's a really nice little opportunity, so.
And the last thing I want to inform the board is for the third consecutive year, the town has been recognized for excellence in financial reporting by the United States and Canada Financial Office Association. Maire has the certificate. Even though it comes in Nancy and my name as the people who are responsible, Nancy is 99.9% responsible, and I just signed this submission. So I really want to take this moment to publicly thank her, not only for what she does for all of us every day, but for her work in putting the financial reports and controls in place to make us eligible to even submit this award and also be recognized for the third year in a row. So I just want to round the applause. And that's all I have, although Mr. O'Connor seems that you have something you want to hear as well.
Yeah, I've got a statement that I'm sort of sorry to read, but I have been proud to serve my town of Situate for the last four years of selectmen. It's with great gratitude and a little bit of sorrow that I must resign from this position. My resignation will be effective June 6, 2017. Much has been accomplished in the last four years, which I am glad to have been repired of. This resignation comes suddenly due to a change in work and family obligations, and it's been a pleasure to serve the people of Situate. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we're sorry to see you go, Marty.
You've done a good job, and.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's a surprise to me, I just read it two seconds ago.
Yeah, it's been a change just over the last few days, actually, that was sort of solidified, and I won't be able to fulfill my obligations, it would be, I've thought about trying, but I don't think it'd be fair to the town, so I don't want to stand in the way of someone else being able to do the job. But I have enjoyed it, and challenging at times, but.
Well, Marty, you're going to be missed.
Thank you.
Four years goes pretty quickly when you're sitting up here.
Yeah.
For some of us, it's a little bit longer than four years.
Sometimes it seems really long.
It's a lot different when you're sitting, not so much down there where you folks are sitting now, but I'm saying it's a lot different when you're not sitting behind the deuts and dealing with a lot of issues and a lot of complaints and dealing with people who are happy, and a lot of good things, too. And it's a lot of time that takes away from your family, takes away from your wife, takes away from your kids, and people don't realize that. So I mean, you spent four years, which is pretty, like I said, I can't believe it, it just seemed like, just not, it looks like she just got on, Morgan on, like six months ago. But I have to say, thank you, because, you know, it is a sacrifice, and from my standpoint, and I'm only speaking on myself, I'm sure that my other board members would agree, that the town of Situate's better off from having your service, public service, and it'll be sad, it'll be sad to see you go.
Thank you. Yeah, we have accomplished a lot, and it's been, it has been fun, so.
It's been great, Marty, you know, thank you for your service, and.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can't follow John, who can follow John with his.
It's tough.
His statement, it's tough, it's tough to follow John after that, but he'll be missed, and thank you.
All right. Well, let's move on to something fun. So we're going to have a discussion, a vote of a special event for the Library Gala, June 10th, from 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM. We know who you all are, but maybe just for the folks out there, you can just.
I think the guy on the right is Les Ball, Citizen of the Year.
He looks like it, I thought that might be him, I wasn't sure.
Well, I usually come with an entourage, you know.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Hold your wallet.
Yeah. I do want to say, Marty, you've been a big supporter of the library, we really appreciate it, we're going to miss you a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Same, Marty. You're one of our early supporters.
That's right.
So I'm Les Ball, I'm President of the Situate Library Foundation, and I'd like to.
I'm Marla Manier.
Karen Danfield, Library trustee.
So we're here to ask for your assent and permission, get permits settled for our library gala. It just so happens that we had scheduled the gala quite some time ago for June 10th, and expecting the library to be open a few weeks prior, but it seems that the library now is going to open, I think, on June 12th. Just as long, as long as everything.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yes, keep everything. So this is going to be like a sneak peek for the people who are coming to the gala. We're very excited about this. It's going to be not a traditional type gala with tables and speakers, it's going to be more like a cocktail party, kind of, with stations set around and past hors d'oeuvres. We want people to move upstairs, downstairs, look, make sure that they see all of the pertinent areas of the library, see how beautiful it is, and how much they're going to enjoy it going forward. So we have all of our permits lined up and ready to go, we have insurance, a quote from O'Donoghue Insurance, which meets the specifications that were given to us. So other than that, I'll give it to Karen.
Well, Les, I think we should go with parking.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So I see entertainment permit, but what about like the alcohol and all that, how's that going to play?
You should have two, you should have the indoor entertainment and the special events permit application, hopefully. So the caterer, they're using a state license.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's sign.
Chef's table.
They're all set.
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's all set, yeah, that's absolutely.
So the only piece says Maire, which is mentioned, see you in charge.
Sure, perfect, thank you. That answers that question.
Yeah. First of all, I want to just do an advertisement. We think this is going to be a great event, we're hoping to get a lot of people in there to see the event. We're going to have sushi bar, we're going to have a pasta bar, we're going to have a pulled pork slider bar, we're going to have past hors d'oeuvres. We're not going to have any red pasta coloring or anything like that, we're very careful with that. We're going to have wine and beer and hard liquor, but we're not going to have any red wine. So we're very careful with that. And we're very careful, too, we've made plans for cleaning. We have three things we're going to do about cleaning, making sure that the place is properly taken care of. We've asked Chef's Table to come up with an extra server, so that server could go around and pick up drinks and so forth that are around. We've also asked that our Situate Library Foundation members do the same. And finally, Service Master is going to come in right after the event and have two people go through the building and pick up anything and clean off anything, and then Sunday morning they're going to come in with a complete crew and clean the whole place. So that's what we're doing around cleaning. We're going to have great music, not loud music, but we're going to have Matt Chase playing down in the lower level, and we're going to have a high school jazz quintet playing up above. We've got an auction, silent auction and a live auction. We've got Michelle Loscano, who of course is from Fox 25 and is a Situate native, is going to be our auctioneer. We've got a number of items, we have concert tickets, we have Rod Stewart, we have Jimmy Buffett, and we have Brad Paisley as auction tickets. We also have premier tickets to the 2018 Masters, so you get premier seats, get into all of the venues and so forth. We've got a Norwegian cruise to Bermuda. We've got a rustic Marlin coffee table, if you know Mustak Rollin', they're from Brian O'Neill, who is a Situate native and started a wonderful company that has produced a lot of great signs and so forth. We've got a weekend tour at a home and a number of other things, so lots of things like that. We also have a wine pool, and we've got a scavenger hunt, which is designed to get the people to go around the library and find things about the library. So those are some exciting things that we're going to do. As to parking, we want and expect everybody to valet park. We've got a valet parking service, Ultimate Parking, and there are 100 places at the new library. He believes that he can put 125 cars in there and still leave plenty of room for emergency vehicles, we've talked about that as well. And the rest of the cars will probably be parked in Central Park, and we're talking to the Housing Authority now about using part of that area. We've talked to Officer Billings for police detail, and we're going to have at least one officer, and I just wanted to talk about our plans here a little bit. The idea is that everybody won't park valet. Some will want to park in Central Park or some other location, and they'll walk down Central Park, and the police office can be strategically placed, kind of between the entrance to the library and the entrance to Central Park, and direct people to cross the street, onto the sidewalk, go down the sidewalk and come back. And so that would be the ultimate goal. Officer Billings thinks that we can do this with one officer and make that happen, although we'd be more than happy to entertain ideas of maybe using another officer perhaps up in Central Park to prevent people from parking, or prevent people from parking, at least in residence parking places, to be very careful of that. So we're very cognizant of that, but I think that at least Officer Billings was pretty happy with what we're doing, and I think we can make it work.
Les, is the resident parking in the back, is that where the resident parking?
Yeah, it is. There is some resident parking on the side close to the library, but as I've been over there several times, I don't see anybody parking in that area. And so that could be an area that the valet people could park. Also, there's a lot of places in front of the ball fields, which are away from the residence parking area.
What is that lock right there? I was going to say for the purposes of the valet, that they might want to cordon off certain areas.
Yes.
Since it's the, I forgot the date, 10th.
So 10.
They'll have the, I'm not sure what the rec department has at the end of the central.
It's the 12th.
There's a softball game going on.
So in the evening?
No, no, it's the 12th.
They said.
In the evening? Chris?
Well, it's a small detail. We'll make it work.
Service Masters, are they donating that?
We're working on that, Marty.
I just, I had heard a rumor that it was being donated.
Skip is getting back to me on that.
Okay.
I've got two questions.
So we've had a lot of nice donations already, I'll have to say.
Are you including in your invite notice about the valet parking, just so folks know to anticipate that?
It's not on the invitation.
They're already printed.
Yeah, oh, they've already printed, you've already gotten yours, I think, so.
No, she didn't.
No, I didn't. I've been away too often.
Okay. No, it's not on that, but we will have ample signage out there.
I'm just thinking, you know, so people aren't surprised when they get there.
Yeah.
So you'll have more success with them not turning around and then going back around.
A very good point. Tweet that on the foundation, on Dick Barry's websites and stuff and spread the word.
Okay.
We'll get Ruth to write about that in some of her future articles.
She'll tweet that out. And then my second question was, what's the capacity of this event?
They've set the capacity, well, I think the target is 250 people with a max of 375, I believe we agreed to. Was that, I wrote?
There's a number of something.
Which is below the capacity of the building, but the feeling was, you don't want it so packed that people aren't comfortable and that they aren't able to participate in the auction. Yeah, so the max is 375.
Okay. And where are you holding the auction, upstairs, downstairs, in the room?
If you remember the building, the auctioneer will stand beside the stairway so that she can look in both directions and see the entire upstairs. And she can also see at that point virtually everything down below, and we'll have people helping her identify people. We're going to do a couple of things like stop the bar during the auction and a few things like that that we've had information about that seems to be the best. I should also say that I think that we're going to find people who will come early and leave early, and others that will come later and stay later, because it's not a sit-down dinner per se. So I think we'll see a lot of that, so we may be able to get more people in than we would have expected. We've already had six people, or six tickets sold, and they've said, "We're not coming." So they bought tickets and said they're not coming.
Oh, you know, Les, I'd be good to those. The foundation has also recruited a number, I think, how many, families as host committee who are, you know, acting as representatives for the foundation and have really stepped up for sponsorships and things like that, you know, before, even before the gates are open. So there's a lot of excitement about this, so I hope you'll support it.
Promotion, sure. I'll move to grant approval to the Situate Library Foundation for the Situate Library Foundation Gala located at 85 Branch Street, Situate, Mass. on Saturday, June 10th, 2017, from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM?
10:30.
To 10:30 PM.
Second.
Second, Ms. Curran, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Looking forward to it.
Look forward to it.
Take care. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. I got, um, thank you. Karen, do we have the entertainment permit?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Do we need two separate motions?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, we got to it. But which one did you just, you did the?
We just did the.
You did, you did special event, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you decided to do the entertainment.
I move to grant an indoor entertainment permit to the Situate Library Foundation for the Situate Library Foundation Gala located at 85 Branch Street, Situate, Mass. on Saturday, 6/10/17, from, is, what time's the entertainment going to?
6:30 to 8:30.
So this one's right, okay, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sounds like a very organized event, we're looking.
Hope you're going to be there.
I've got to check the calendar, but I'm going to try.
Thank you.
Next, we have some interviews and discussion, session one, board and committee applicants for Sister City Cork County. I know one of the applicants could not be here tonight, Kevin Callanan.
He's here.
Oh.
I'm here.
Okay. I was given information that you weren't going to be here, that's why, but that's why I'm glad you're here. Okay, so we'll start with, it's going in order, huh?
Yep. Brenda O'Connor.
It's nice that we got such a great response to the committee.
It certainly is.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself and some of the reasons you'd be interested.
I'm Brenda O'Connor from Old Forge Road, and I'm thrilled to be one of 16 citizens eager to serve on this committee. As I said in my caveat letter, there are many reasons why I'm interested in this, one of which is my knowledge and love of Ireland, which is enhanced by family connections, extensive travels, and study, a lifetime of study of Irish history and culture. Added to this, my skills honed over 40 years of teaching in the classroom and service on committees as a member or a leader at the local, state, and national levels. And my work ethic, I think, combined to make me a good match for the committee. In addition to this, I really am committed to the Sister City concept. I believe in person-to-person and people-to-people relationships developing, and it is through those relationships that respect and understanding of nations occurs. And West Cork is particularly part of my heart. My Cochrane ancestors are from Innis Shannon, the gateway to West Cork, the beautiful town on the Bandon River. John Cochrane and his wife Catherine Murphy Cochrane left Innis Shannon in 1852 with their two children, Cornelius, who was foa, and William, who was one. William is my great-grandfather, and they left Cove and two came to Boston and lived in Stoneham the rest of their lives. And I don't know whether my memory is real or whether it's filled with pictures and stories from the family, but William died in 1946, and I was four years old at the time, and I think I remember him, but I'm not sure. But it seems to me, he had a mustache, and he would kiss me all the time and tickle my cheek, and this is fond memory of him. And I think it's because of my connection with him that I really became a student of the Irish famine, because he was a starving infant, malnourished and all, leaving Ireland and had a successful life here. But the pain of immigration is very real, and I think it's something that particularly hit the west, it hit all of Ireland, but the west coast was particularly hit in West Cork. So that's really why I am interested in the committee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You did a pretty good job covering the Brenda, anyway.
I'm impressed with 100 books a year.
Yeah.
I do, my daughter beats me. Every year, we have a contest, and I count sometimes children's picture books, but she doesn't. Although she does, she does count cheesy romance novels, and I don't. But we come from a long line of readers.
Well, you certainly have the background.
And the passion.
The passion, yeah.
I do have the passion.
The story alone tonight was fabulous, so I think that was a lesson in itself, so thank you.
Well, William Cochrane also, there's several stories, he was an Irishman and he had the gift of storytelling. But one story, which has been in the family, he of course was one-year-old when he left, and he never returned. And he told my father and everybody, the most beautiful sight in Ireland is the bridge at Innis Shannon. And of course, what does he remember of it? My father's ambition was to see the bridge at Innis Shannon, and he went in 1964, he and my mother for their 25th wedding anniversary, and he saw the bridge. It was just one of his life.
Is it still standing?
I went in 1965, and it had been replaced. It was, it was a death hazard, because it was built for horses and traps and, and people were dying in automobile accidents. At one point, it was the only route to West Cork across the Bandon River. But anyway, one of my friends, who was an art teacher at the school, did a painting of the old bridge that hangs in my family room now.
But we have lots of stories like that. Thank you for honoring your time.
So just so that you know, we're interviewing for all the applicants. We won't be voting today. And then we, next meeting is the 16th of May?
Correct.
Did I get that right?
Yeah.
So we have another round of interviewees, and then I suppose, I'm not sure if it's the 16th that we are planning on.
Probably the 30th.
I'll be in Ireland on the 16th, so I won't be here. How ironic.
Anyway, just so that you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, Audrey Donovan.
How are you this evening?
I'm good, thank you. So I have lived here, well, it's 10 years, but one year, we were, a year and a half we were down in Florida, which we came from Florida, but I'm originally from Weymouth, but I have many relatives who live here in Situate. And I am 100% on, both my husband and I, of Irish descent. And I have a couple of relatives who came, well, my father's family is, his, my grandfather, my father's paternal grandfather was from Cork, and my maternal grandmother was from Cork. I unfortunately have never been to Ireland, I've been asking my husband, he's served in the Coast Guard for almost 30 years, and kept saying, "I want to go to Ireland, I want to go to Ireland." His grandmother was from Ireland. And, and so we've always had a connection, you know, to Ireland with our roots. And my, this woman's just talking, my mother and father visited in the 70s, and there's a place called Ladies Bridge in Cork, which my mother said is absolutely beautiful, my brother's been there. And I just, to me, a lot of it, my grandfather was a great storyteller, he was from, his parents, he was from Galway and from the Aran Isles. And so I feel like with my background, I'm, I have a background in law, and most of my time has been, since I married my husband, a lot of volunteer work, and more with my community. And when I was living in Florida, I volunteered for, it was a grassroots group where they were restoring a historic water tower down in Coral Gables. And so I have a background in government contracts, and so I helped, I worked with the engineers and whatnot, but worked with the citizens where we had fundraisers and all that. And I very much like giving to my community. What I've been doing here is, I've been doing a lot of pro bono work, where I review guardianship care plan reports down in Plymouth and in Norfolk. And I also have represented indigenous clients in divorce cases and guardianship cases. But I felt this was a great opportunity to give back to my community here, and very much so connected to my, you know, my ethnicity, my background. my background. Um, the other thing is, when we did go back to Florida for the year in Coral Gables, my daughter was in middle school, and we just decided to take a trip, it was with the school, to Italy. And Coral Gables is a sister city with Pisa.
Oh.
And so we traveled over there. It was wonderful for the children, because we met with the mayor there, and we sat in their assembly area. They gave certificates and pins to the kids, and it was such a wonderful experience. And I think that would be fantastic to do something like that here. And, um, just to connect the cultures too, and I think it would be, you know, especially here. I know that, you know, a lot of my background, because of my, you know, it was passed down through the, the generations, you know, being of Irish ancestry, that I would see common links, but there'd be things I wouldn't see. And it'd be great to get over there or to communicate with the people over there, to then bring some of it here, to kind of connect it together. So I think that's kind of my interest.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I just, another qualified candidate. I think, you know, a lot of it has to do with interest and passion, like Morris said a second ago, and it seems like you've got both, so.
Great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Sullivan. Come on up, John. How are you this evening?
Doing well. How about yourself?
Good.
Uh, first, I want to say this is a, a great idea to have all of the candidates, and I'm sure that every single person that you've met with brings their own background to the table. I'll talk a little bit. I'm fortunate in that I was born and raised in Cituate, and, um, after I graduated high school and after I graduated college, I started doing my own family genealogy. And what happened is, I learned the genealogy, I became more and more interested in wanting to know about the history of Ireland. And I realized that the only thing I'd ever learned about Irish history, at least in the schools, was not true, which is that there was a famine in Ireland. There was never a famine in Ireland. It was the failure of one crop. And so I started learning and learning. And I, in the Irish language, it was called angortamor, which means the Great Hunger. And I'm fortunate enough that I've been able to go over to Ireland a number of times, and I'll never forget going to Kilmainum Jail. And if you ever have that opportunity, one of the first things they say in Kilmainum Jail is that all the other countries in Europe experienced the failure of the potato, but most of the countries put guards on the borders to prevent food from being sent out so that people would not starve. And this gentleman told the story of, of a girl who was sent to Australia for stealing a turnip. That was during the, the Great Hunger. But, um, I've been to Ireland a number of times. I'll never forget going there in 1993 and thinking, every American, no matter what background we have, should go back to the home country, because it's a powerful thing to go back to where your ancestors came from. Um, on my father's side, my grandmother's family is from Galway, and my grandfather's family is from Cork. Kelleher's, Coakley's, Sullivan's, and McCarthy's. And my Kelleher relatives came from a little tiny village called Drimmer League in West Cork. West Cork was hit very, very hard by the Great Hunger, and that's where a lot of these tough stories come from, songs like Skibbereen and tales of the suffering of the people. Um, I'm also a member of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, which is an Irish Catholic group that works to increase, increase people's awareness of Irish history and how important that is to learn about the contributions the Irish have made to America. One of the statistics that I discovered was that, um, there are more Congressional Medal of Honor winners of Irish descent than every other nationality combined. That's a staggering statistic. Back to Irish history. So I started learning about Irish history, reading about the battles of 1798, reading about the Fenians, reading about 1916, and some of the key figures that brought about the fight for Irish independence. Also participated in a march in Derry City for the 30th anniversary of Bloody Sunday, because I think it's important that the, the bumper sticker that you see, the expression that you hear is, "If you want peace, work for justice." And going to Derry and meeting the people was a powerful experience. Um, my, both of my, both my mother-in-law and my father-in-law were born in Ireland, so I've had the opportunity to go back and connect with people there. I still have relatives that I see, and I go back and forth as often as I can. The line that I sometimes use with friends and family is, my time in America is just time spent, biding time between trips to Ireland. I have an appreciation for the wit, the humor, the importance of music, the importance of literature. The Irish spend more money per capita on the written word than any other country in Europe. Ireland also has a tremendous love of music, which I think we could be enriched from doing. Ireland, to the best of my knowledge, is the only country in the world to have a musical instrument on its currency. And if you ever have the benefit of going to a party or a house party or something like that, almost every single person will have what's called a party piece. So if you don't sing a song, you recite a poem. If you don't recite a poem, you play an instrument. And it's inherent in the culture that everybody brings something to the table. Um, I think the Sister City Project is a great opportunity for Cituate. Frankly, we don't market the most Irish town in America enough, where there's only one place that bears that distinction, and I think it would draw great attention to our town. It's tremendous that we were able to have the Consul General of Ireland down. She should be a regular visitor, and I think it'll strengthen the ties between our town and Ireland, and will also bring more and more people to our town in a positive way.
Thank you.
Great observation.
I don't, do you have any questions?
Other than, I think, you, you told me, 'cause I know somebody else, I think, had put it in theirs, but you're, one of the heroes that you look up to is Michael Collins?
Michael Collins.
I was thinking. Interesting.
There's a tremendous book by Tim Pat Coogan, and it was, it was on Tim Pat Coogan's book that the movie with Liam Neeson was based. And if you ever have the opportunity to take it out to the library, I'd encourage you to do so, not so much for the movie, because the movie's pretty accurate, but also there's a number of interviews with Tim Pat Coogan, and he goes into Michael Collins' life. Michael Collins, fascinating character. His father was the seventh son of a seventh son. And at the time, Michael Collins' father married his mother, Michael Collins' father was sixty years old. When Michael was born, Michael Collins' father was seventy-five. But his father, at the time he was born, was not allowed to receive a formal education, so he was taught by a hedge master. Michael Collins' father spoke Irish, English, French, Greek, and Latin, yet never sought, never sat in a classroom. And it was from Michael Collins' father that he had a tremendous respect for older people. And it was he who was successfully fought the Black and Tans, waged a guerrilla war, and was able to bring the most powerful country in the world to the table. At the time of 1916, England-controlled countries with a total population of 450 million people, yet it was Michael Collins who really led the uprising that successfully caused the twenty-six of the thirty-two counties to be free. So, yeah, Michael Collins is a, is a hero of mine. He's an extraordinary person, and the more you read about his life, the more incredible you realize. He, you know, he died at the age of thirty-one years old. And he was in the GPO in 1916. He was an aide to, uh, to Joseph Mary Plunkett, who was one of the signatories of the proclamation. It was Joseph Mary Plunkett who Ruth Thompson, in her article, talked about. He was married to Grace Gifford in the chapel in Kilmainum Jail. They had ten minutes in the cell alone, and then he was executed at dawn a few hours later. Powerful, powerful stories, and it's a reminder that there's great, great stories in all aspects and all times of Irish history. But one other thing, I do speak a little Irish, not that it matters in the scheme of things, but, uh, I, I know a little bit, that's all. Any questions?
Sure, it won't hurt.
No, I don't, I, I think the decision's gonna be difficult. I, I just wanted to go over, so there's, there's eight at-large positions that we're appointing. There's, um, and then there's some people coming from some separate areas, like school committee. Um, again, there's a, there's a student exchange part of this as well that'll, that'll come into play. Um, and then some from the chamber, um, cultural district member, and economic development committee, and the merchants, and then a couple of people from the Sous Y Enbree Committee. Um, I see, back there. Um, you know, I'm sure they'll lend a lot of input in terms of having already done it before. So, um, so I don't know how we're gonna decide.
We'll figure it out.
But it's, uh, but I guess in that context, we should start thinking about asking questions like, what, what are you gonna, you know, in terms of what we're looking for here, everyone loves Ireland, obviously, or you wouldn't be here, but what, what, in terms of what we're looking for, can you bring, in terms of the event planning and that, I guess that sort of stuff, you know, what, maybe it's a question more for the board than, than you, John, but what do we, we're gonna find, we have twenty people here that are...
Pretty equally qualified, yeah.
Well, so far, we've got pretty diverse backgrounds, lawyers, teachers.
Well, I, I, so here's, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, um, you know, um, yeah, well, I, I think what we should do is finish the interviewing, not just for tonight, but the next time. And then, um, you know, we, we might want to just take a look at the charge, just figure out, you know, logistics, how the numbers, I mean, I, I realize now we've got two from like the, the Cituate Harbor Council, all that. Let's take a look at, to make sure that, number one, they're, they're gonna participate.
And also, I was just thinking, maybe, maybe you're involved in one of these other areas where you can fall in as not a, like, if you're part of the chamber as well as, you don't have to be a...
Right.
So that's my question. Are you part of any of the other activities?
That's a good question to ask everyone, yeah.
Well, I'm involved in the AOH, but that's a Plymouth organi, it's based out of Plymouth, but it's really Plymouth County. I'm also in the Chamber of Commerce. I'm also, as you know, I'm a local attorney. I, I work in town. So maybe the Chamber of Commerce role, you wouldn't have to be an at-large position, because the chamber is gonna have representation as well. That's...
That's his point.
So that might open up, you know, that's a logistical issue that we have to figure out.
Okay, sure, yeah.
So that's a question we could be asking now, too, is affiliations.
Yeah.
That was a long winded... I just think this is going to be nothing but a tremendous, um, thing for the town of Cituate, and I really hope that, that the town can take this and build upon it and continue to build upon it, because I'm sure you're getting the sense that there's really strong ties and there's a tremendous level of interest in the townspeople and what's going on with the Sister City Project. Well, I'll say we're already successful at it. We've got a great relationship with Sous Y Enbree. John knows more about it than I do, but, um, so I'm, I'm confident that it's gonna, this is gonna blossom, so. Great. But thanks, John. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great trip, by the way.
Thank you.
How long, you know?
Very short. Don't, don't, don't ask. It's a short one, unfortunately.
Just four weeks.
Catherine Miller?
Hey, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So my name's Katie Miller.
Katie, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've lived in Cituate for five years. Um, I'm originally from Quincy, and I live here with my son and my husband on First Parish Road. Um, and I'm interested in this committee because I had the, um, great opportunity to study at the University College Cork my junior year in college, and so I spent, um, September through May in that city, living there, and really becoming, um, part of that vibrant and joyful and dynamic city of today. And I think it gave me a sense of, um, Ireland and what it's like in the 21st century. And so that was very eye-opening for me, so I had grown up hearing all these wonderful stories about my heritage, but then I went and lived there, and it was very different than what I expected. So I didn't quite realize how vibrant Cork County was in particular. It has a fantastic art scene. Its jazz festival is known around Europe as the premier jazz festival. Um, it's also well-known for education. The University College Cork is a real outstanding university. It's one of the top six universities there, and it's a beautiful campus, so, um, it's also a great place for different artisans, um, you know, jewelry makers and, um, different artisans of that type, so that stood out to me when I was there. So that's why I was interested in it, 'cause I think, you know, Cork County has so much to offer, and I think we could bring that here. In terms of my skill set, I am, um, I have a master's in communications. I'm an excellent writer. I'm a good organizer, um, so I think I could bring that to the committee, so.
Great.
Yeah.
And are you affiliated with any of the, the chamber or any of these types of things?
I am not, no.
Okay. Again, another strong candidate.
You highlighted a lot of nice aspects of Cork to bring over this way to...
Absolutely.
So Katie, would you do an exchange program for a year? Is that what it was?
Um, no, it wasn't an exchange program. I just did a junior year abroad.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep. So no exchange.
What's interesting is, is that it's like, um, the whole twin-city approach is, is culture, history, um, food, I mean, music, and, and that's what I think is, and it's for not ju, it's for all generations, which is what I've noticed with the Sous Y Enbree exchange with, uh, Pat, 'cause I went over to France, and I was fascinated by it. And this, as John had said, this is gonna, there's more interest, there's a lot of, there was a lot of interest in Sous Y Enbree and continues, but the, there's a huge outgrowth of interest, so.
Yeah.
Fascinated by it.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Katie.
You're all convincing me that I need to go to Cork next week.
You can land and then drive to wherever you're going. It's not that difficult to drive home.
Siobhan?
Thank you, John.
Siobhan Hunter? I pronounced that correctly, did I?
Siobhan, yeah.
Okay, I thought, wanted to make sure.
Everyone here knows that.
Exactly.
So I'm Siobhan Hunter. I live in Cituate, and I work here as a realtor as well, um, and Cohasset Village, too, for William Ravis. I'm a dual citizen of Ireland. My mom came from Timmyleague, um, and she went to school in Clonakilty. My dad's from the Glen Road in Belfast, so I know all about altered history. He's informed me quite well. And so I have a background of, of corporate training, sales, marketing. But most importantly, I've come from, what I've noticed is there's a disconnect between, you know, generations and generations. They kind of lose, they lose a lot as you keep, as the generations go on and on. So the music, just the generations, I, I'd like to bring that back to Cituate. And even like the Easter Rising ceremony that we had, when I talked about it to other Irish descent people, even in Cituate, they don't know what it is. They thought it was like Easter up at the, at the harbor, and that's sad. So I'd like to help bring that back. Of course, my dad was from Belfast, so I got a very, he left during the troubles, so I got a very intimate, you know, description of the end as well.
Right.
So I do speak a little Gaelic as well. Um, I'm not fluent, 'cause that's a tough language, Italian, Spanish, I pick up like that, but Gaelic is tough, but I hope to learn more, of course. I'm not fluent. But I, I like to instill that with my son Declan too, just for him to learn Gaelic. It's a, it's becoming a dead language, so I think it's important just to share what we know and bring it back. My uncle is a, um, in the hotel business in Cork in Garivo, so we have a connection there already. Um, but most of my family's still there. And so I'm very intimately aware of the culture, and I'd like to help people in Cituate, you know, appreciate where they've come from, well, most of them come from. So, um, I have my, do you guys, will you guys look at the resumes and everything?
Yeah, we have them in front of us.
Good.
Envious of your dual national, nationality, or citizenship, probably.
Yeah.
Always wanted that and couldn't, so.
Oh. I'm, I gotta look into some...
Person died in the line, too.
I think it was, it changed a little bit during 9/11, so I had gotten it prior to that, thank God.
That was good for you.
Yeah. So, I mean, I can go back, you know, to Europe if I need to, but, um, so...
Well, you bring up another great aspect, right? As the generations go down, they know less and less.
Right.
I'm so guilty of that with my girls, so I love your ideas.
Yeah.
So I hope to help everyone, bring, bring it back a bit. So I'd love to go over the
history, but it's a long tree, so. I think your first meeting is going to be very long. That's what I suspect with all of you. The Irish like to talk, tell stories.
We'll probably be, probably be at the galley.
Exactly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For coming in.
Thanks, Siobhan.
Who?
Yes? Peter? Come on up.
Oh, I didn't see him. How are you, Peter?
Now, I asked John who your hero was because I was reading Peter's, and I think if I'm not mistaken, your hero was Michael Collins also, so.
Indeed, indeed. Collins was a hero to a lot of people, but it's so interesting right now, when you think what's going on, Collins was vilified by so many when he was negotiating with the British Prime Minister Lloyd George, and he had to make that compromise, giving away the North in exchange for freedom for the South. And now here we are, all these years later, and there is serious talk, because of Brexit, as some of you may know, of reconciliation, of the North choosing to join the Republic, that it could happen. No one wants a hard border, which might be the result of the negotiations, but it's amazing that Collins' dream could come true after all these years. But I want to compliment you on your courage for inviting a bunch of Irish Americans in here and giving them an open microphone and asking them to talk about themselves. And there are 20 of them, which sounds like a nightmarish prospect, I suppose. So I'll try and be brief. This town had, after the famine and, Situate was so welcoming to Irish Americans. I grew up here and I worked on the waterfront. I was a city kid when I came here. I was just blown away at the fishermen and the beauty and the whole thing. But there were many, many Irish who had been here for generations. There were the Yankees who settled the place, the Tildons and the men of Kent. But then, in the 19th century, as many of you know, there were a great many Irish who came here. And this was a comfortable place for them. I grew up mossing. They called it Irish moss. What is Irish moss? Well, when the Irish got here, they were struggling to find something to do, and it was a trade that they practiced in Ireland. And they looked out, looked over the side of their dories and they saw the moss, the waving on the rocks off Peggety Beach and all these places. And it was a trade they were able to practice here. In Irish, I don't speak Irish, but it's Carrigheenan. And it's, when I went to Ireland some years ago, I went to the town where my wife's grandfather came from, Ballion Green, in East Cork, on the opposite end of the county. And I looked at the town and it looked so much like Situate. It blew me away. It had cliffs and it, just the physical setup of the place reminded me so much of this town. I said, it was like an aha moment. I know why these people from Cork, when they came here, they must have had a feeling of comfort and they were welcomed. And they, they found a variety of things to do, some of which we will not get into in detail tonight, during prohibition. They were a very inventive crowd and some of them found some, as I say, some unique ways to make a living here in Situate. I remember one old Irishman telling me that he was a dear friend, a fisherman here in town, and he told, he remembered during prohibition, there was a raid off Third Cliff. They were bringing in some hooch from the Maritimes, which was the route, would come down from Maritime Provinces, and they'd come right into Situate. And he said, I remember my being in the house and it was full of men and all the shades were pulled down because the police had raided the shipment that was coming in on the Third Cliff, and they were all hiding in this house. So that's a little, perhaps a little less exalted, a bit of Irish history that went on here at Situate. But I'll be brief, as I said, you've heard that before from Irish people. But I'm thinking that Brenda and I might be related because my great-grandfather also came from Innissannan on the Bandon River. And I know the bridge of which she speaks because I fished in the Bandon River. Caught nothing, but it was a great ambition to be able to cast a line on the Bandon and I also found my great-grandfather's baptismal records at St. Mary's Church there in Innissannan, which was one of the great thrills of my life. But when I heard about this, I said, wow, this is a, just such a great idea because our ties are so historic and, and what's happening now is very much in the news. I mean, we're going to be hearing more and more about Ireland. We'll see what happens. Reunification, Collins' dream, may not come true, but it may. And if I can contribute in some small way. I had a chance to travel a lot to Ireland and I always remember getting off the plane, covering the visit of the 12 governors of, during the bicentennial. And they had some kind of a big junket and I, those, a few of us in the media were lucky enough to go along. And getting off that plane, I was in my 30s, had never been to Ireland, and I stood there and they played the National Anthem, the Star Spangled Banner, and they also played the Soldier's Song, the Irish National Anthem. And I remember being so moved and feeling what many Irish Americans feel, a sort of moment of, heck, you know, I belong here in some way, this is part of who I am. And my wife as well, she came, we didn't, we learned much later that her family came from a little town up the road called Inshigila. And we went back a few years ago, I promise, this is the last Irish story I'll tell. But to try and find relatives when it's way back in the distant mist, it's not always easy. But we, the first thing you do, of course, is you go into the pub, which we did in Inshigila, in the Briar Rose Pub, and they said, well, what are you doing? And we said, well, we're looking for some evidence of my wife's family. And they said, well, who would they be? And they actually had an Anglo name, although they were Roman Catholic, the name was Taylor. And the woman said, my God, I know the house. She says, it's right up on the hill. And would you like to see it? So I said, yes, we'd love to see it. So she got her husband and we got outfitted in wellies and we proceeded to bushwhack up a mountain top and my wife and I going across these fields and uncovering this stone pre-famine house, which was my wife's grandmother's house, the house she was bought in. And my wife said, what an experience. I said, experience, hell, let's try and own this place. And so I went through the process of going to Skibberine and hiring a solicitor and having the place surveyed and everything else. And then we discovered that every cousin of my wife's, and there were 30 or 40 of them, had the same right to the property that she did. And they were starting to come out of the woodwork. And so the dream did not come true and probably it was, it was a good thing, too. But I think this is a great idea and the ties between Cork and Situate are so great. And if I can contribute in any small way to furthering them, I'd be happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
No.
No, I just say, I share it now only because it's kind of funny. My wife's father is half German and half Swedish, so Osterberg's the name. So, you know, I was doing my genealogy, I'm trying to get through it, so I'd love to pick everyone's brains who've been doing their genealogy. So I'm actually jumping on, I think it was back in February, trying to trail his lineage back, and sure enough, somebody was Irish, they got married, and so I was able to inform him, he's 81 years old, that he's actually Irish and my wife is Irish.
Well, the reconciliation between the, you know, people, the stereotype of the Irish, of course, if you grew up here, is the Irish Catholic. But in Ireland, there's a Church of Ireland, a Protestant church in every community, and the communities, the ties are very strong. I always remember that Robert Briscoe was a Jew. He was the mayor of Dublin. And so the different cultures, despite the troubles, and the troubles were a unique tragic phenomenon, but thanks to George Mitchell and the American influence and Bill Clinton, who did some good things, the reconciliation of the religions really began and the self-governance of the North, which is in some jeopardy right now. But anyway, it's, it's good to know that people of different religions, not just one religion, can, can live together in harmony. Let's hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
I didn't miss a trip or anything, did I? Trip to Ireland? Did you miss a thing?
More is going.
Not yet. I'm going next week, you can't go yet.
Kevin Callanan.
How are you this evening?
I'm fine, good evening. Glad to be here. My name is Kevin Callanan. I claim to be of Irish heritage. I married Nancy Mahoney in 1963. We've lived in Situate, raised a family here since 1964. Having listened to Peter and John and folks ahead of us, I thought maybe the prudent thing to do would be to withdraw my application, but...
No, 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 no.
But I've decided that the lawyer in me is going to come out and I'm going to try to rally, rally the jury here. My personal connection with Cork and Cork City began in 1959 when I was spending a junior year in Europe. And no one in my family had been to Ireland, at least my parents had not. And the grandparents were born here, it was, so it was many generations ago that the Callanans came over from Ireland. If you go to Cork City and look in the phone book, there's a lot of Callanans. There's also a lot of Callahans. So my first trip in April of 59 was by myself. Took the train from Dublin down to Cork City, walked around one Sunday morning, and there it was, right in front of me, Callanans Pub. The same spelling, not Callahan, but Callanans. And it's 10:00 in the morning, it's really not open, I go in. Mrs. Callanann is there scrubbing the floor for Holy Week. And I put my passport down and said, we have the same name? And here I am. And she said, oh my God. She said, I had a brother who went to Boston 40 years ago, we never heard from him. And I said, no, no connection. But that began the relationship. It's a sentimental and friendship relationship with the Callanans, who are now Crowley's. They live above the pub, it's no bigger than this room. And in many trips since then, both Nancy and myself, including a trip with our children and some of our grandchildren, we've always stopped at Callanans, at 24 George's Key, right on the Lee in Cork City. So I have that connection with Cork City. I've been to places like Kinsale, which are glorious, the golf course at Old Head is spectacular. Been to Clonakilty and, and all down the western coast to Mizzenhead. So I'm familiar with the area. I can't claim to be a historian, but I certainly have affection for the area. And the Crowley grandson, I looked at my iPhone just while waiting here, when he was, when I saw him last, he worked for the Tourism and Events Unit of the Cork City Council. Now again, I can't claim any, any leverage over him, but he does seem to be in the kind of business that would fit perhaps with this group. I think this is a great idea. I was not aware of it until just a week ago and thought I would, I would offer myself to help out. I also served for 34 months on the USS John Barry, which is a destroyer in the US Navy. It's now out of service, but it was named after Commodore John Barry. And I think when they assigned me to that ship from the Bureau of Naval Personnel, they must have noticed my name because my roommate the first cruise was a fellow named Donald Coolahan. So they were sort of stacking the ship with Irish officers, even though the captain was not Irish and he wasn't really very pleased about that. So I, again, I'm happy to serve and in any capacity. This is a great committee and we've had a number of trips to the County Cork and I look forward to being of assistance. I have to try to top Peter Mahigan with an Irish story and then I'll finish. He mentioned, he mentioned Mayor Briscoe. And it reminds me of the story that is attributed to Yogi Berra, who was one of our great American patriots, right? And it goes back to the days when Yogi Berra was catching for the Yankees and he and Gil McDougall were getting ready to start the game and, and Gil McDougall said to Yogi, did you, did you hear the news, Yogi? A fellow named Briscoe, who happens to be a Jew, was just elected to be the mayor of Dublin. And Yogi said, yeah, I heard that. He says, only in America. Thank you very much. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Kevin. No, another qualified candidate, so.
All I know is that I want to be the liaison to this committee.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Kevin.
It's yours, sir.
Aaron Gobrah, what does it mean? Or anyone?
Aaron Forever.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I do that.
I might be a little Irish. It might be.
Good evening.
How are you?
Your executive official McCarthy tonight?
I know it. Like the other day, I just waited when they introduced McCarthy, so.
Yeah, well, I am.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
So, if you want to know.
Do you know anything about sister cities?
I do. And so I'm hoping to be one, not of the, you know, at-large...
The sister, Sousy En Brie.
Yeah.
Can I designate?
I would be offering help from our experience as a sister city with Sousy En Brie. I'm also a member of the Situate Harbor Council. Cultural.
Oh, okay.
And as is Marie Flaherty, who's on my committee. And so we were hoping to be, to represent. She could actually, I don't know who will be from the...
Is she applying as well?
As far as I know, but I, I don't know whether she did or not.
I'm not sure.
But anyway.
So can I ask a question for a second? If, if it's possible, that would all the applicants who are interested tonight, if you were a designee of, it could be from the Harbor, Situate Harbor Cultural District or Sousy En Brie or from the Town's Economic Development Commission, would you entertain at least going back to talk to them and tell them what you're doing as a part, kind of like a dual relationship, but just if that were the case? In other words, to be able to go meet with those boards and tell them what you're, you're doing as a member? That's one of, in other words, if they had a proxy instead of having one of their members, that maybe...
I think that John may be the only...
No, John I know is a member, actually, but I'm saying if maybe one of these other, if they were as a proxy for them, then that would be one way that we could address it. In order to do that, you'd have to go back and say, okay, maybe go to one of their meetings every so often, just to explain as a member what you're doing. That's one of the thoughts I had, if that's a possibility. You don't have to answer it now, but at least it's a consideration if we get that. Numbers issue, that's all.
Is there a loophole there?
Yes.
I see you working it.
I told you we'll figure it out, but it's just throwing it out there as an option, that's all. Sorry, Dan, I was just...
That's okay. So I'll mainly talk about my role as one of the founders of the Situate Sousy. But I do have to say, my grandfather is from, was from Skibberine. And so we heard a lot, and I knew him until I was about 10 years of age. His wife, my grandmother, was from Armagh, so Northern Ireland. And my father was actually, my father was a sports, Pete McCarthy was a sports reporter for the Providence Journal. And he, an excellent golfer, so I know a lot about the golf courses in Ireland, which I had never played, but he played a good number of them. And I foresee something could definitely be occurring with golf and some kind of an exchange. And actually, my dad was one of the founders of the Northeast Amateur Golf Association. And unfortunately, he's not here, which would be too bad because actually, if Pete McCarthy was sitting here, you'd never get him out of the room. But the background of golf, you know, and all that, and Ireland. So, and another grandfather was from Cork as well. So I grew up listening to all the stories and everything and so happy to finally live in Situate and we're such a strong heritage. But my, obviously, my first love was the connection... just was in Situate a couple of weeks ago, Madame de L'Or. And it was the greatest experience, because our students were never hardly ever speaking French, and, you know, they knew about the culture and had learned about it, but being with families and interacting with people, there is no replacement for that. And I just see, since 2009, when we've been a sister city, the connections that have been made, and the back and forths, and just lasting. And that's with adults, because we've had two adult exchanges that have been very successful. So I would like to be on the committee as a, you know, sort of a helpful, you know, arm to the whole thing, and just to, because there's a lot of work involved in, you know, and responsibilities that you have to delegate, and we have a lot of interest, but, you know, when it boils down to it, you need people willing to step up and do the different things, like publicity, and you get the ideas, but then you need, you know, your groups. And I really, having talked with the mayor of Cork when he was here, I know they're very interested in various types of interactions, being with adults and with students. I have talked to Rob Wargo a bit about possibly some type of high school exchange, and I certainly think it would be nice if there could be a little language involved in that. But definitely, on some level, is doing that. But certainly for all other types of things, which have already been mentioned, the music and sports, definitely art, because we know that there are, you know, artisans and artists, a thriving community over there. So, and we have a number, we know, a very artistic town. And the surrounding area, the one thing we have to remember is that even though Situate would be the sister city, we, with the French Suisse En Brie, we have included members, like on the artist thing, it was South Shore Arts Association and North River, et cetera, and that was wonderful for bringing people from the surrounding area and participating. So I'm hoping, you know, with things that we do with Ireland, if we were doing sports teams and stuff, we probably wouldn't just do Situate, but we'd have other, you know, communities involved. And I know there's a lot of interest, you know, people joining. So I just want to put a little plug in that for the Situate Sister City project that we have is not a town committee, but it's, we formed it from the Situate Sister City Suisse Committee, because we wanted a vehicle for a nonprofit organization. And so we have a bank account with Rockwell Trust, and our finances have gone through there, and it's been very easy for, for instance, this last visit, when the students came from France, they wired money directly into our account for the events that they were paying for. And we have done the same thing with many of the, you know, friendship abilities. So I see that sort of, and the mission statement, if you go on the website for the project, does not specify a particular area. It's international connections, leaving it open for, you know, other sister cities, but also events that might take place with a, you know, a group in our town, and it might not be, you know, the sister city. It might be an event that we're having that's more international, like our film festival. We just showed a Spanish film, because we have, you know, a lot of students taking Spanish. So it's written such that it's just Situate and connections beyond and out of the United States. And so we see, and we would like at least two members of the sister, the Ireland, the West Cork Situate, to be on that board, so that that would be the vehicle of communication. You know, the sister city, Suisse Situate, would have their own meetings and plan, regular meetings and planned things. The Ireland committee would do the same, but it's important to have, you know, then meetings of the project where they share, you know, what's going on, so there aren't conflicts. And maybe sometimes, some of the possibilities would, might involve, you know, both committees. I'm thinking of things, as far as I talked to, just very briefly, when the committee was over here, but I spoke with Brian Hulahan, and we were talking about culinary possibilities. And I know France is, they have a wonderful culinary school for high school students, and I think Brian said there are something similar in Ireland, and that's something that could be done as three, you know, relationships, and then groups going over, you know, to the respective countries as well. So those are ideas, but I'm very excited that we've added another connection abroad. So I look forward to, you know, helping out with the committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We look forward to your guidance. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. I think you do a great job.
So two weeks, we're going to meet again for the other ones, and then I guess that, would it be that night?
Probably both that night.
That night? Okay. So you're welcome to come back, or you can watch us on TV.
I'll be back.
We'll figure out, we'll figure out the numbers. Don't worry.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thank you all for coming in.
I'd just like to say, I know some of you know, sorry I was late, sorry I missed a lot of the interviews earlier, I was at Ed Mavoffal's wake. What a turnout, two hours in line, down the street, down Summer Street to get in. Sure is, yeah. Got to be missed.
Summer Street?
Summer Street in Cohasset.
Cohasset. I was going to say, okay.
Yeah, two hours.
Wow.
By the same Anthony's Church, going down the side, that's Summer. So just before we start, the next thing, I just was peeking, so there's eight spots?
Oh, yeah, eight spots.
Eight spots, and we interviewed.
Eight at large, yeah.
Yeah, eight large spots.
Okay, all right.
Next, we've got a discussion and vote on a new common vic license for Gondor Investment, DBA Crayo Yogurt, Marat Gondor.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Gondor.
Gondor, okay. Do we have backup? I'll see it. Yeah, it's. Is it under? There it was. I saw it later.
Yeah, it's here.
Page.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. Okay.
There it is. Fifty-nine. I think it's page fifty, no. Yeah, it starts at fifty-seven. Fifty-seven. All right. So you're looking for a common vicular's license, is it, because it's, the business is being transferred or sold?
Yes.
That's, all right. And you're buying it, or you're selling it? You're buying it, and you're selling it?
No.
No.
I'm not selling it, actually. I'm just here to help him out.
I got you, okay.
Why don't you tell, tell us what you're doing?
Yeah, exactly.
You want me to translate him? His English is not.
That's okay.
Yeah, you translate.
What is it, I mean, they want to keep it as is, because I have a, they have a very good reputation in that Crayo.
Yes.
Around the street. So they want to keep as is, but they're going to put more different flavors toppings, get it much bigger around. So I think they're going to operate more hours than like, I think they have 11:00 AM till 10:00. We're going to change that 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
So you're buying, just the transaction is you're buying it from the current owner?
Yes.
Okay. And has that already taken place? Has that, has already happened?
We made the offer, it's accepted. We got the deal from the landlord, too, but we cannot sign unless we get the license from the town of Situate, so.
And where are you from?
Turkey.
Turkey. Do you live in Situate? Where do you live?
I live in Wayman.
In Wayman? Okay. And you have any experience in this type of business?
Yes, in my country.
You sold yogurt?
A lot of food, 10 years' experience about food vendors.
In retail?
Yes.
Food retail?
Yes.
And are you going to be working there? Who will be working?
He will, he has two managers already there. He's going to be working there himself, too.
Okay.
Is he keeping the same employees that are there now?
Yes.
Okay.
So the same?
Name is George, and the other one is Diane, I believe.
I know George very well.
Very well?
Very well, yeah, he used to work for me.
You eat a lot of yogurt?
No, he actually doesn't. He's a very thin guy.
Are you buying both locations in Situate? Isn't there one in Marshfield as well?
That's been closed, they said.
Oh, it has? Okay, okay.
What was the answer to that?
When do you hope to take over?
As soon as we can.
Soon as we get this straightened away?
Exactly.
So just to correct on the hours again, so you want to open at 7:00 AM?
Yes, we are planning, yes.
Okay. Are you going to sell breakfast?
Yeah, sell something different.
Coffee?
Coffee? Like a coffee?
You cannot cook there, because there is apartments on the top, so you cannot have a hut, and the landlord is very restricted about it. He put it on the list, he said no cooking at all. Because he had some problem with his other tenants. So there will be no cooking. Maybe they can have a coffee, tea, or some kind of desserts, goes with, you know, coffee settings.
Okay.
Other than that, that will be as is, so.
So you're going to basically keep it as is?
Yes.
Add a few foods?
Either fruit, maybe more toppings, more flavors.
You're going to have real Turkish coffee?
Yeah.
Good stuff.
I was going to ask that question.
Really good stuff.
But Duncan Doherty's business.
Yeah. No, that and Turkish delight.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to motion? Yeah, please. Everything looks like it's in order here, so. Move to grant a common vicular's license to Gondor Investment LLC, doing business as Crayo Frozen Yogurt.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Good luck.
Good luck.
Welcome. All right. So we do have something that's been scratched from the agenda, so we're going to move on to a discussion and vote of the North Situate Playground Contracts. Mara Glancy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sean McCarthy.
Mike Westwood.
Am I coming in?
Mike.
Oh, and Mike Westwood. How are you, sir? I didn't recognize you with the hat.
Came from golfing.
Oh, you've got the life of Riley.
So we're going to build this thing?
I hope so.
It's been a long time.
Should I identify myself?
Please. Thank you, Mara.
I'm Mara Glancy, 61 Kenneth Road, also Recreation Director, Town of Situate.
Sean McCarthy, Situate DPW.
Mike Westwood, resident of Situate, 44 Amy's Way.
To the playground. It's a long time coming. We'd like to award this to a, we went out for bid, and we picked the lowest bidder, and we'd like to award this to Nelm, N-E-L-M.
There are two contract awards before you this evening. The first one is for Park Street Playgrounds, which is the actual equipment that will be installed on the site next to the WPA building in North Situate.
Sean, can I stop you? Mara, can you just give, just because people are watching us, they really don't know what we're talking about. So this is North Situate Playground up by the WPA building where the old swing set and tennis courts used to be?
The old swing set's still there. That's going to be taken out. It's a gigantic swing set that will be gone. It started with, originally from the Seaside Playground over here at the high school. We had a plan for that up here at the high school, and then as things progressed and as votes went on, the junior high became where the playground was supposed to be. So then we found a place in Situate, it was Jen Vitelli who started this, and I took this over in, at the end of June last year, and they found a place, which you had seen with her, she came here a couple times, right next to the WPA building. She thought it would be a great spot for the North Situate, and the merchants were all on board. So it's progressed from there, one thing after another, that we've gone through hurdles and different things, but we're now sitting in front of you.
And CPC?
Yes, CPC-funded, yes.
Project, so they've passed a couple years ago? Was it?
Two years ago.
Originally, the first one was for $297,000 back in 2011, I believe, and then when we were put on hold.
They do here, yeah.
Back here, right?
Yeah. When we put on hold and we found another spot, we had to generate some more money, because there was more site work that had to be done. So then they went back to CPC, and they were awarded 271 and change, in $498,000.
Total.
Total. So now altogether, it is, we were awarded, this would help if I did this, sorry, $568,489,000.
So we have two separate items happening, the site work, and then we have the playground equipment award as well.
Correct.
Okay.
There will be one more awarding after that, and that's pending at the moment, and I believe that's the synthetic rubber that you put at the bottom, which comes in last, and that, we don't have that contract yet.
Okay.
Mara, could you just talk about life expectancy, and then I know when I was liaison to rec, you know, how it could be moved if it had to be moved?
Yeah, I kind of, I'm not as up to date as Jennifer was at that time, and I apologize for that. I don't know the life expectancy quote, but I know it's longer than a regular playground, because it's, the technology has caught up. I was involved with the other playground, that lasted, what, 15 years?
Right. Right now it's made of wood.
I'm sorry? And that was wood? Yes, yes.
So this is all polymer and?
Longer, yeah.
State of the art.
So this will be a lot longer, and it'll have the ground will be synthetic, that rubber, so when the kids fall, it will feel better than falling on regular. No, so I don't know that exact, how long the life expectancy will be, I'm sorry.
But certainly longer and more environmentally friendly, more child-friendly.
Megan, can you see this?
And if you're looking at that, the green area is going to be natural, that's closer to the end of the parking lot, and the middle is going to be, you know, Mike, you could probably speak to that, too, is going to be this synthetic rubber part, and then at the upper part, where it looks brown, that was, that's going to be the wood chips. It's, it's kind of synthetic, and they blend eventually.
Yeah, I mean, you can't do quarter place for the whole thing, or that would have been our whole budget, but you have to still have it, so it's ADA compliant, and that some of the things can be accessed for children with disabilities. So we've taken that in consideration. There's a couple, the items are on there, they're specifically for them. So basically, we tried to incorporate everybody in everybody age groups, so like, there's a little kid section with little kids, like, what do we call them, houses and shippies or whatever else, and then there's like zip line and climbing nets for the bigger kids. So we had a, like, a committee that went through and picked certain items that we wanted, or they wanted, to try to incorporate everybody, so it wasn't just, you know, a couple people. There was probably like eight people that would attend the meetings regularly. I mean, this has been going on for about two years now.
Yeah.
Obviously, with moving it from over here, Seaside, Seaside is flat, you just have to take it out and put it in. And that one, I think people built by themselves, which you can no longer do anymore. There's too many regulations in how far away a swing has to be, how high up a slide has to land, so a lot of the money goes into site prep and building it out. It's no longer, you know, somebody with a dump truck come and dump some sand. I mean, even the stuff we have to take away, like, they want to check. This has been a long time in the coming, but I think we've done, you know, a great job with what we've had.
Tell me a little about the zip line.
Yeah, so it's funny you ask. That's what everybody, everybody's, it's not really a zip line like this.
It's going to be the kind of zip line that's going to go.
From the top of a building and across through North Situate.
Across the train tracks. There's one in, across from Charles River. So it's really, it's, there's a base, a round base at the bottom you kind of sit on, like, you zip down or whatever else, but the kids love it, and you jump and boom. But it's not, no, it's not where you hold up and zip down and knock people down. A lot of the parents that were involved had your same concerns, and then the playground designer showed her a video.
Okay.
Of what it actually is. So like, yes, they were thinking kids are going to get knocked down, someone's going to get tossed to the right and left, and they became comfortable with it.
So this is North Situate Playground up by the WPA building where the old swing set and tennis courts used to be?
The old swing set's still there, that's going to be taken out. It's a gigantic swing set that will be gone. It started with, originally from the seaside playground over here at the high school. We had a plan for that up here at the high school. And then, as things progressed and as votes went on, the junior high became where the playground was supposed to be. So then we found a place in Situate, it was Jen Vitelli who started this, and I took this over at the end of June last year. And they found a place, which you had seen with her, she came here a couple times, right next to the WPA building. She thought it would be a great spot for the North Situate, and the merchants were all on board. So it's progressed from there, one thing after another, that we've gone through hurdles and different things, but we're now sitting in front of you.
And CPC?
Yes, CPC funded, yes.
So they've passed a couple years ago, was it?
Two years ago.
Originally, the first one was for $297,000 back in 2011, I believe. And then, when we were put on hold?
They do here, yep.
Back here, right?
Yeah. When we put on hold and we found another spot, we had to generate some more money because there was more site work that had to be done. So then, they went back to CPC and they were awarded $271,000 and change, $498,000.
Total.
Total. So now, altogether, it is, we were awarded, this would help if I did this, sorry, $568,489.
So we have two separate items happening, the site work and then we have the playground equipment award as well.
Correct.
Okay.
There will be one more awarding after that, and that's pending at the moment. And I believe that's the synthetic rubber that you put at the bottom, which comes in last, and that, we don't have that contract yet.
Okay.
Mara, could you just talk about life expectancy? And then I know when I was liaison to rec, you know, how it could be moved if it had to be moved.
Yeah, I kind of, I'm not as up to date as Jennifer was at that time, and I apologize for that. I don't know the life expectancy quote, but I know it's longer than a regular playground because it's, the technology has caught up. I was involved with the other playground, that lasted, what, 15 years?
Right. Right now it's made of wood.
I'm sorry? And that was wood, yes, yes.
So this is all polymer and?
Longer, yeah.
Correct.
State of the art.
So this will be a lot longer and it'll have the ground, will be synthetic, that rubber, so when the kids fall, it will feel better than falling on regular. No, so I don't know that exact, how long the life expectancy will be, I'm sorry.
But certainly longer and more environmentally friendly, more child-friendly?
Megan, can you see this?
And if you're looking at that, the green area is going to be natural, that's closer to the end of the parking lot. And the middle is going to be, you know what, Mike, you could probably speak to that, too, is going to be this synthetic rubber part, and then at the upper part where it looks brown, that was, that's going to be the wood chips. It's kind of synthetic and they blend eventually.
Yeah, I mean, you can't do quarter place for the whole thing, or that would have been our whole budget. But you have to still have it, so it's ADA compliant and that some of the things can be accessed for children with disabilities. So we've taken that into consideration, there's a couple, the items are on there specifically for them. So basically, we tried to incorporate everybody and everybody age groups, so like, there's a little kid section with little kids, like, what do we call them, houses and shippies or whatever else, and then there's like, zip line and climbing nets for the bigger kids. So we had a, like, a committee that went through and picked certain items that we wanted, or they wanted, to try to incorporate everybody. So it wasn't just, you know, a couple people, there was probably like, eight people that would attend the meetings regularly. I mean, this has been going on for about two years now.
Yeah.
Obviously, with moving it from over here seaside, seaside is flat, you just have to take it out and put it in. And that one, I think people built by themselves, which you can no longer do anymore. There's too many regulations in how far away a swing has to be, how high up a slide has to land. So a lot of the money goes into site prep and building it out. It's no longer, you know, somebody with a dump truck come and dump some sand, I mean, even the stuff we have to take away, like, they want to check. This has been a long time coming, but I think we've done, you know, a great job with what we've had.
Tell me a little about the zip line.
Yeah, so it's funny you ask. That's what everybody, everybody's, it's not really a zip line like this.
It's going to be the kind of zip line that's going to go.
From the top of a building and across through North Situate.
Across the train tracks? There's one in, across from Charles River. So it's really, it's, there's a base, a round base at the bottom you kind of sit on, like, you zip down or whatever else, but the kids love it and you jump and boom. But it's not, no, it's not where you hold up and zip down and knock people down. A lot of the parents that were involved had your same concerns, and then the playground designer showed her a video?
Okay.
Of what it actually is. So like, yes, they were thinking kids are going to get knocked down, someone is going to get tossed to the right and left, and they became comfortable with it.
Okay.
But they were very against it from the beginning as well.
There's a small one at Jenkins now, and they're?
Right. It's a little different than that. One thing about this zip line, we were very conscious of the fact that children with disabilities could come and play on that, and it would be very difficult for them to get on the sides and zip down. So we, now we're having the loading then in the middle. And when I was talking to the landscape architect and the designer, she says, you're state of the art, you're really thinking outside of the box. So we're going to now sell this to other places like that, so it's going to have a nice, unique factor of this.
Get a little royalty on that.
Yeah.
Anybody else say?
Want a motion? So what's the dollars, just the dollars real quick?
Okay.
So $289,000, what's that, what part is that doing?
The site prep and the construction company, installation, everything else.
So on the first one, the executive action is $112,197, am I saying that right?
Is that the equipment?
$112,000.
That's the equipment. And then the site is, if I remember correctly?
$289,600.
$289,600.
$300,000 for site prep?
Site and installation, though.
Well, if you think of that area, it's got a?
It'll be grading two flat plateaus, one higher, closest to the WPA building.
Look at the bids, though, Tony.
There'll be some subsurface drainage.
Right, and you also have to add handicap accessibility and everything to the playground, because right now, there isn't any. So like, on the right-hand side, they'll be able to come and get into the playground.
Yeah, there'll be changes in the concrete walk at the edge of the parking lot now, depressing the curb so you can roll right from the parking lot up onto the concrete sidewalk.
So they'll make it all accessible, okay.
Exactly, yeah, over by the handicap spot shown at the end of the aisle.
Yep.
It's still outrageous.
It is.
I support it, but, oh my gosh.
I mean, someone came up.
We borrow some of your trucks?
Almost $400,000, right?
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it is what it is, and?
Lot of liability.
I think we at least have to acknowledge the fact that it's very expensive, and it's, you know, expensive asset of the town.
Well, that's what happened, like, so you're $300,000, yes, you could buy some equipment, it's already flat, might have been a little easier. That was seven, eight years ago that they thought they could do it for that. Now you're doing a new site, it's seven years more expensive, all the materials are different, and now nobody can do it yourself.
Right.
So every aspect has to be subbed out.
So what is the total going to be?
About four?
Four? Four-ten?
A little over four.
Yeah, but that's just for this thing, I have another?
Without the rubber around?
The rubber's coming later, yeah.
Right. Do we have any bids on the rubber stuff at all?
What's that coming in about?
Is that the bid right here, right?
Yeah.
About 50 grand?
$64,160.
He's going to say the other one was 50, so.
And that's the blue part of this?
No, no, I mean for another area.
Is that the blue part, the rubber's the blue part of this picture?
In the middle.
Yeah. So the total?
$401,797.
Plus the rubber stuff.
So it'll be under the budget, it'll be under?
Contract is $528,157,80.
That's what we have or what we're spending?
And that's including the architect?
Right.
The design, we also had to have a soil?
Right, like, so we had to drill a couple pits, we had to do some soil drillings, that we had design work, we have a playground specialist to make sure everything's compliant. So there's a lot of soft costs that go into it as well, that you wouldn't think of.
That's from beginning to end. Tonight, as of what, it's about $401,797.
Sean, I really can't read all your writing. They look like local contractors, some I recognize, some I don't.
Yeah, well, some were Rockland, some were?
Wakefield Council?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at.
Marshfield?
Can't read it.
Yeah, yeah, he's from Marshfield. Green Acres, I think he's from Bridgewater area.
Says Wakefield.
Oh, my bad, yeah. Dan Dell's from Marshfield.
Originally from Rockland. N E L M, who, I've never heard that name before of you.
Yeah, they're from Rockland.
The one out of Rockland, I think that's the low bidder, N E L M?
Yeah, his name is Raymond Delmonico.
Delmonico, okay, yeah. That's a well-known name. R A D, they do playgrounds.
No, but it's not really the R A D.
Well?
They're brothers.
Oh, it's the brother, oh, good.
So I mean, they're very experienced at doing, so that makes me, I didn't recognize the name, all right, good.
Yeah, we were happy with the amount of bids, I think, that we got in.
Well, unfortunately, well, we had to replace that one anyways. That was a splinter having over there. So it's expensive, but we need it, and it's, North Situate needs a boost up in that area. I think it's a great place for it to go and?
All the merchants are on board, they had a night that just celebrated for the playground and they gave 20% of their?
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
That's nice.
I think it ended up being around $1,000, it was nice, they're going to give bench. And, you know, there are some fundraising going on, that design was what, eight or nine citizens that designed it, helped design it, and they turned into a fundraising community a little bit, so now they're trying to?
You might have strong-armed them to do that.
If we give any more money, we're going to, they're going to do fundraising.
What do we do about parking? Because I know that's the MBTA's parking lot, there's some spots that are?
Yeah, so there's 10 spots that you guys, that Situate has, right up front. So that's basically, we came to you guys, I think, a year and a half ago for a request to do that.
Two years.
And then the overflow parking, from what I know, whoever parks in that lot, that money goes to Situate, correct?
Yes.
Nobody really uses it except for lately, because I don't know if we're not charging it, is that why people are parking there? But nobody ever used to park in there at all. So parking was never an issue.
No, but you can get ticketed.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they are ticketing. I know in the other lot, they are.
So when the playground's down, we're going to post that there's 10 slots for playground use, and five waiters will be fined.
Okay.
Is that ticketing from us or ticketing from the MBTA?
We're going to assign those 10.
Same spot.
Yeah, but this is, so can we revisit that at another meeting at some point? Because I think 10 spots is really small, I don't know what we have to do with the MBTA to talk about that, but?
I think it's a great way to pay for the playground.
And we own those, we own the spots that are being charged for, correct?
There's spots that are reserved now for, they say visitor only.
Right, those I know.
The MBTA was supposed to be?
Okay. But the actual ones that are being charged, the people that get on the train, that revenue goes to the MBTA, or does that go to us?
No, it goes to us. It's ours.
We all, we all own it.
Right, that was my point. Just wondering if we could, if we could change it a little bit.
We discussed this at some length way back when we decided to move it there.
Right.
Yeah, let's not remember.
But tomorrow's point, we can discuss it. Yeah, the last thing I want to hear is someone going down there getting a ticket.
Yeah, me too.
You know, that's the last thing, and you don't want that either.
No.
Right, so.
But there's not more than, how many spots are over here?
And they're going to, they're going to?
Yeah, but this is going to draw a lot more.
And on a good day, you know, hopefully, hopefully it will.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's 10 spots over there.
The place is packed, you know?
There's a couple, four in front, two on the side.
We'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Motion?
Please.
We're going to start with?
A move to award a contract to N E L M Inc., Construction of Rockland, Mass. for the sum of $289,600 for the site work for the new North Situate Playground.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a second motion?
I'll move to award a contract to award, move to award contract to award contract. I'll, I'll strike that. I'm going to move to award a contract to Park Street Playgrounds LLC of North Reading, Mass. for the sum of $112,197 for the purchase of playground equipment for the North Situate Playground.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a second motion?
I'll move to award a contract to award, move to award contract to award contract. I'll, I'll strike that. I'm going to move to award a contract to Park Street Playgrounds LLC of North Reading, Mass. for the sum of $112,197 for the purchase of playground equipment for the North Situate Playground.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for persevering through this.
For years of work.
It's going to be great.
It's going to be great.
When do you think you're going to break ground and what's the anticipated date?
I talked to the contractor today, just to tell him to come into the selectmen's meeting to award, he told me he's going to start in a couple weeks once he gets going.
Oh, great, so maybe end of the summer or?
I think the equipment lead time will probably be?
Yeah, it looks like around sometime in August.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the picture.
Thank you, guys.
Do you need these back?
Okay. Next, we have on the agenda, Reed, the Safe Boating Week Proclamation. Reed Oslin, Flotilla, Vice Commander, U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary.
Thanks, guys.
How are you this evening, sir?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
So?
Yeah, just you?
Should I read it?
Yeah, just say your name and?
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Reed Oslin, I'm a Situate resident, I'm also Vice Flotilla Commander of the Situate Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla. We promote safe boating, we're starting the new boating season, we're affiliated with the United States Coast Guard, and we run a number of boating education classes, vessel examinations, prevention and patrols and operational support of the United States Coast Guard. As we come into the new boating season, not only do we have our normal mariners who are out there all the time from this beautiful port of Situate, but we're also very concerned about paddlecraft and kayaks and paddleboards and so forth that have really grown so much in use in recent years, and that's quite a safety hazard. So we greatly appreciate the support of the Board of Selectmen and joining us in this proclamation of National Safe Boating Week, so thank you very much.
Quick, sir.
Welcome.
Very well. I'll read this, where National Safe Boating Week proclamation. Whereas on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, approximately 70% of those, these are facilities fatalities, I apologize, fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. Therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Situate, to hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 14th to 20th, 2017, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating. In witness thereof, we urge all those who boat to wear it New England and practice safe boating habits, and signed by the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen. And thank you, we do appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful evening.
Thank you.
You as well. Going to move on to new business? We have a discussion and a vote on some one-day liquor licenses.
Motion?
Please.
Move Board of Selectmen approve a one-day malt, wine and malt license to the Silent Chef for a birthday party to be held on, to held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Friday, May 12th, 2017, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Silent Chef for a birthday party to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Friday, May 19th, 2017, from 6:30 until 10:30 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to the hospitable hostess for a christening to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Saturday, May 13th, from 12:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Lavishly Done Catering for a bridal shower to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at 119 Edward Foster Road on Saturday, May 6th, 2017, from 11:30 a.m. until 3:30 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have three one-day licenses for the Situate Beach Association, we have Chris George here, if you'd like to come up, Chris. The reason we have to do these is, we, the license hasn't actually physically come back yet, I believe, is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
I can answer that.
Right, the A B C is not?
Right, so that we haven't physically gotten it back in our hands.
So we have to do temporary ones?
Right, so we have to do one days.
All right. So I have a question, because we, the Board's discussion of approving this liquor license, we were told it would be for members only, and these are three events that are outside the realm of the Beach Association, so I just want additional clarification, because that's what was represented when you applied for your liquor license.
I don't think that it was ever presented as members only, we are member-run.
But, you know, the purpose of was to, you know, memorialize what the current practice as 100 people in that area, and I don't think that's the sense of what I certainly had when you applied for the license.
I'm sorry you didn't have that sense. I think business as usual is how we're approaching this. It is not a departure from what's been done in the years past. What we're doing with these three events in particular, one is a relatively small, mostly-member party for the Kentucky Derby. One is a fundraiser for the Jenkins PTO that we're hosting at the SBA.
Have you done that in the past?
We've had the Jenkins PTO, but not last year. We had it two years ago and the year before that.
Okay.
And that's really the big one, the fundraiser there. And then the third is a fundraiser that we're hosting for a local family whose son was diagnosed with leukemia. So, the third is a net new event for us. Otherwise, the Kentucky Derby is an annual event, and the Jenkins PTO has been, it was two years ago and the year before that, but not last year.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Again, that's three weekends in a row, since that was in a residential setting, I know that wasn't being expressed, but thanks for that.
Sure. No problem. I mean, I can speak to that a little bit, Tricia, because I'm a former member of the SBA, and, you know, they have had other events there. But, again, as he's saying, most of the members, it is membership. Some other people are invited. And I do remember the Jenkins one two years ago, so.
Okay.
And it's pretty much, there's not, it's not anything, any kind of a crazy, crazy party or anything like that, so. I feel pretty comfortable with it, yeah.
I think you'll also find that a large portion of the attendees for that are also members.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, I think we said in totality that there was only a half a dozen to 10 events a year over the course of the summer, is that correct?
Of the larger events, yes. There are kids' events and all the other stuff.
We're talking that the events, I mean, even one of them here only goes till seven at night.
Right.
So it's an afternoon party. I guess our concern was for the residents that have, you know, those big parties that go later in the evening for the fundraising events and what have you.
Right. Yeah, those are, those are limited to a half a dozen or so, maybe less.
Motion?
Please.
Can I ask a stupid question?
No such thing as a stupid question.
So, we're approving a one-day wine and malt license, yet the application has all alcoholic beverages?
That's a good point.
The difference, the difference, right?
Yes, the intention is all alcohol, Chris.
Yeah, I don't know that there, I didn't recognize that it was.
Because the license we're wait, they're waiting on is all alcohol.
What's your intention?
Our one day is wine and malt only.
Is that right?
The town can only issue one-day liquor license for wine.
Wine and malt, so we just, we need to make sure that you don't serve anything other than.
Once you get your full license, you're good to go.
Right. Understood.
So, you're clear that if, if you have to use this license we're giving you because you don't get your other one, there won't be any?
Right.
Alcoholics.
You should be getting your license soon.
One would hope. One would hope. We had some additional paperwork we had to file, and that sort of delayed the process, but.
Because you have it checked off for every event? So, just be clear not to do that unless, alcoholic beverages are checked off for every event, all three of them?
Correct. It's a, it's on the one-day application, I think.
Yeah, but you have choices, yeah.
If it's not an option, it shouldn't be on the form.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we approve the right thing.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license pending receipt of tip certificate.
I have those here if you want to see them.
Yeah, we did receive them.
Okay.
This week, yeah.
To the Situate Beach Association for a private party to be held at Situate Beach Association located at 88 Situate Ave. on Saturday, May 6th, from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to the Situate Beach Association for a fundraiser to be held at Situate Beach Association located at 88 Situate Ave. on Saturday, May 13th, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move that the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to Situate Beach Association for a fundraiser for Parker Sullivan at the Situate Beach Association located at 88 Situate Ave. on Sunday, May 21st, 2017, from 3:30 p.m. until 7:30 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. So those were all four zero. Michelle with John, Danny here.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, Chris. Hopefully you get your license before that, you know?
Yeah, how does that work? It just, that takes precedent, right?
We'll call.
Yeah. So if we get the all alcohol license, these are.
So it comes to us, not to them?
Correct.
Yes, and then we notify them.
We sign it?
You'll be upset.
We have to sign it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Take care. Next, we have the discussion of vote on some peder license, 2017 renewals.
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a Hawker peder license to Zack's Ice Cream for the 2017 season.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a Hawker peder's license to Anona's Homemade Ice Cream for the 2017 season.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a, approve the Hawker peder's license to Bert's Ice Cream for 2017.
Well, second that discussion?
Discussion, yeah.
Bert's Ice Cream?
Did he do it last year?
Is that the one with the?
He did. He did it late in the season last year.
Does he have to try like the little car? Has a car?
No, no. Primarily operates in Marshville, and he wanted to hammer on with that.
Oh, yeah.
Where the former.
Stores.
And then rather go to the right and to the residential neighborhood. We granted it last year late in the season.
Yeah, no problem. So there won't be anybody overlapping, and if there is, it would be fine? All right, good.
Yep.
Hopefully it's a hot summer.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Inadmissible.
Correspondence?
Other business correspondence.
We have one correspondence here. No, we have a couple of them. Yep, so, we have a letter from Maura Glancy sending out to folks in the town and thanking everybody for their help on the Easter egg hunt, for the Widows Walk Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 15th. That takes a lot of folks to make that happen. So, Maura says not only do the children love it, but the parents and grandparents do too, and that she heard from many Situate residents how happy this event, how happy everybody is that this event takes place. And on behalf of the Recreation Department, she's thanking everybody for all the assistance. So that was nice of Maura to send that out. And then we have another letter, Marty, to you, from John Sullivan, thanking folks for honoring the Easter Rising, which took place on April 23rd. And so, he hopes that it will be an annual event and looks forward to helping in any way to nurture and foster increased awareness of this milestone in Irish history. So that's from John Sullivan, who we heard from earlier. And then we have another annual letter to the Chairman, Mr. O'Toole, from National Grid, letting folks know that there will be tree pruning and removing taking place beginning on, actually now, and going through March 31st, 2018. So just to keep an eye out, there'll be National Grid trucks carrying, you know, trimming the trees away from the lines.
Good.
And that's it for correspondence.
So are they cutting the trees on all streets, or is it just like, like the right-of-way, you know, through the?
Um.
I think it's pretty much everywhere.
There's a map.
It's not town, it's typically not.
It's.
State streets.
Yeah, it's like the big, huge, like, area they cut across. So you might not see them on the streets. You'll see them maybe in your backyard if you're, if you're above the property. And it's the one like on First Parish that cuts across over Maple Street.
High Tension Way is what you're talking about.
It's the High Tension, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that.
Just wanted to make sure.
Because they, don't they subcontract the other stuff out to like an Asplund or something like that?
All right.
Is it?
Other business?
Other business, of course, yeah. John, why don't you, I'll let you go first, see what you cover, and then maybe we might be on that.
I don't, I don't, don't have anything, other than, no, I'm fine.
I know we had already covered it, but go ahead.
Well, I, there is a candidate's night, I believe, on Thursday, May 4th, obviously, you know, for those people who are interested in the upcoming elections, and I believe it's being held.
G A I.
The G A R Hall. Time escapes me. I think it's at seven?
Seven o'clock, I think, seven?
Seven. So if you're interested in learning about candidates and the election that's coming up later this month, please attend. It's Thursday, May 4th, G A R Hall, Countryway, 7 o'clock. Perfect. Thank you.
I'll just add, I wanted to thank people who attended town meeting. It went two days, as anyone who was there knows, and it was well-vetted. I think we discussed every issue probably in detail, and I think most of the things passed, and I was happy with the outcome of it. The only thing I'll say I was disappointed with is, and I know it's tough doing back-to-back nights, even the first night, there were 300 people there, 305 maybe, and then the second night, there was 120 people there. And 120 people is 1/10 of 1% of our town's voting voters. So, 1/10 of 1% of the people in this town decide what happens in the town, and I think that that's a little bit sad. So, and I talked to the Board of Selectmen about it, we always question whether this form of government is the right form of government for the town if the people aren't going to participate. So, so I'd like to have that formal discussion at some point in time about.
Like a representative's.
Not necessarily changing, but what can we do to get more people to come out and show for the meetings? Because it's, you know, it's just not enough participation.
I'd almost be inclined to say, let's have a forum, but I'm not sure anybody would show up.
Well, I think we should, I think we should talk about it at another meeting, put it on the agenda, because I think it's part of the charter review. We've got to look at changing. If it's representative town meeting, I think we need to do something.
And again, maybe it is that, but maybe there's technology, or maybe there's another way for people to be able to participate that falls within the guidelines of it that we aren't aware of. But it's just, when we're standing up there and we're talking, and half the people there work for the town, you know, it's just not a good representation of everyone that should be, that we should be getting opinions on.
And we need to take baby steps and talk about remote participation on our committee meetings, too, if we're going to look at.
More stay focused.
Remote participation at annual town meeting.
But there was a town.
Take baby steps to get there.
Ruth, we might even have the answer to this. There was a town that had a town meeting last night, I just heard it on the radio today, that actually voted to do that, like an electronic-type voting thing.
I don't know. But that's what the handheld device.
Oh, it's still, you still have to be there. Maybe, maybe more people would be there if they didn't.
It's just more accuracy.
No, well, the one thing that.
It's instantaneous, voiceover.
Yeah, but it's not based on being remote.
You have to be in the room.
They have to be in the room.
You have to be there. But at least, I think, you might end up with more people. A lot of people are afraid to go there and vote because they're afraid everybody's looking at them, you know what I mean?
It's a crisis if you want.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, you.
Or are things running that good that people think it's all right?
That's possible, yeah.
Well, the thing that happens, that almost happened at town meeting is, you know, it was a long meeting, and a lot of people got up and left, and then someone up to the mic and wanted to recall, or re-vote. And when there's only 50 people sitting in the room, it really does not give a good indication of what's going on and what the original, I mean, if 300 people thought something, and then you wait and try and get when there's only 150 people there to see if your way goes, I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's the democratic process that we're looking for. So anyways, I'd like to sit down at some point.
I think it makes sense. I think the discussion is, isn't.
It's definitely not working.
And the only other business, again, kudos, Tricia brought it up, to everyone that participated in Ship Shape Day. It was very impressive. The weather was great. I know that all of the sport teams were out there, that those entities got their people out to clean their fields. I know that there were just a ton of people on the roads. I know the bangers did a ton of work. Megan was out there for a lot of the day interviewing people. So it'll, I know there's some, there must be something on Situate TV coming on shortly. And it's just a great community event, so.
How many tons of trash did they bill?
Almost a thousand bags.
A thousand bags, almost.
Thousand bags.
Wow.
I know, I pulled a tire out of the swamp.
Really?
Yeah.
You did that?
I did. People like threw.
Getting rid of your tires, is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, that's what I do. So, but I would like to challenge everybody to, you know, we did this, right? We did it all day Saturday, walk the dog, Sunday night, Monday morning, again.
Trash.
So, could you stop doing that? And I think, challenge everyone to pick up a piece of trash daily so it just doesn't get so out of control.
It's interesting, because I suspect there is a lot of debris and items I do tend to see on the Driftway. But I think a lot of that has to do with people coming and going to the transfer station and stuff blowing out. So that, you know.
That happens a lot.
People maybe should be a little more acutely aware of what they're doing, and sometimes it's, it's just an innocent mistake. But what's not is when you go on to other areas and you're finding people, I mean, I remember seeing somebody take a bag, must have been, I say McDonald's or Burger King, literally threw it out the window on 3A here, and it went all over the place, and they just kept driving. Now, that doesn't mean that they're from Situate, it could have been anybody, but just the concept of, I'm just gonna get the stuff outside my car and toss it out. I, it's foreign to me. I guess maybe because the 70s, growing up, it was like, who don't pollute? And the, yes, the pollution campaign, people seem to be tossing stuff out more and more. And of course, all of the nips and all the beer cans that you find around sometimes town, I, you start that up in social media, and they go bananas. But I'm like, it's the reality, it's all out there. It's like, I went to Rockland Trust to get, you know, some money this morning, or actually this weekend, and there were nip bottles outside the bank. Somebody had to like, take a swig of booze and just like throw it right before they got their money? It's just, that's crazy.
Probably ran it so they had a drink inside where it was protected.
Oh, my God, that's just.
Building they had.
That's insanity. But, any event, I digress.
I do, I have one thing. Can we ask Jennifer in the Health Department, is there anything that we can do to spray for ticks? Does Plymouth County treat for ticks along the public roads at all?
Don't get me started on Plymouth County.
It's supposed to be Plymouth County.
I said, I.
I'll check more.
Hold that, hold that there.
Well, because there are the mosquito control, but.
I know, but, or can we, can we look at something? Because I've gotten a lot of concerns of folks that are walking along the Driftway, walking down Gannett, that even this weekend when, you know, we were all.
Picking up.
Doing Ship Shape Day, I mean, literally, you would see them just crawl up on top of the bags, it's, it's.
They jump.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
But there's a flip side to that, too, with any kind of pesticide spraying, because we hear from the other corps about the nonchalance gap, you know, whatever, but I will definitely.
I just don't know if there's something out there that, yeah.
Well, maybe we could ask, ask her to come in to see if there's something she, you know, put her on the agenda if she wouldn't mind early, and maybe this, people can take preventive measure.
We also need to know the potential side effects of spraying, because there are a lot of sensitivity.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to be, absolutely.
No, I know, I'm just saying, Maura, we just need to make sure that both sides.
Just do a public campaign, right?
Yeah, she's.
He doesn't, that's why I thought, well, maybe he's been working on something where there may be some sort of treatment.[1494.61]